The meeting will come to order so that we consider, reconsider, consider again board goals for 2022, 23. You have a new paper set of them? Yes, does everybody have one? Because I have an extra set.
I don't know.
Oh, well, I guess you're next to me, so you get it.
We are projecting a Word document, so as we have suggestions, we can make edits on the fly to the best of our ability.
I'm doing it. There's not a lot of ability, so.
All right.
Absolutely.
If I could interrupt, this is Taranet. This is a public board meeting with public comments sign in availability. I believe we do have public comments.
That's correct. There is one registered for public comment. So this is the time for public comment on board goals. Persons wishing to make public comment on the 2022, 2023 board goals were required to properly register prior to the designated start time of tonight's 5:30 meeting. When public commenter's names are called, I would ask that please approach the podium and begin by stating their first name, last name, and municipality.
Who wants everyone?
Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. The board asks that all commentary be directed to the board as a whole. Public comments may be interrupted or terminated if the commentary exceeds three minutes or if they are obscene and or threatening in nature. All persons attending this meeting are expected to conduct themselves with decorum and civility. In addition to refraining from abusive and profane comments, please also be respectful of all persons in public comments, including those comments and opinions that differ from your own. Distracting or disruptive behavior or other actions which interfere with the orderly conduct of this public meeting will not be tolerated. The first commenter, the commenter we have is Judy DeFonza.
Hi, I'm Judy DeFonza, and I still look at the description. Looking at the board goals, I noticed there's something under measurements of priority where 90% of the class of 2023 will meet the Keystone Exam requirements and Jackson performance from minority and low-income students will be eliminated. I think that's going to be a hard one to meet because the class of 2023 was in ninth grade during the pandemic and they would have had biology and a lot of them would have had algebra at that point in time, and they didn't have to take keystones because they couldn't get into the building because of the pandemic. So, and there was no, they didn't have to make them up either. So I think you've got a gap in data there, so it's going to, I think, be a very hard analysis to do. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, in addition to the state grants for coronavirus, the school district will seek funding from at least three other sources. My suggestion is to apply for the PA High Performance Green Schools Planning Grants. This grant is for schools who have energy efficiency improvements made with comprehensive measures, hold buildings, solar space heat, foot of a tape, wind, biomass, geothermal heat pumps, daylighting, passive solar space heat, solar water heat, and small hydro electrics. So I'm thinking that that would be a good one to take advantage of. And let's just see. And I was also thinking that it might be a good idea to maybe bring in gifted students to work with the Westchester School District team, because I know gifted students have to do projects and a lot of the projects are just kind of, you know, spinning their wheels trying to come up with something. And this would be something I think that would benefit the school and the student because it would give them some real, you know, you know, rubber-on-the-road kind of experience with, you know, doing actual work that we can all kind of reap the benefits from. So, and I also wanted to talk a little bit about maybe turning some areas of the campus into meadow areas, which would require less maintenance over the long haul. They produce more oxygen, and it could save taxpayers' money in the long run. And I think it sets a good example by, you know, doing things that are, you know, energy conscious like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. I also want to thank you for your email this morning with a couple of edits with some typos. So those are something, they're edits that we're going to acknowledge in just a few minutes. Regarding the Keystone Exam requirements, one of the things that I would just mention, per Act 158, there are a number of different alternate pathways that permit students to be able to meet the Keystone Exam requirements. So when we actually shared out at our education committee back in August for the class of 23, we were at or above the 90% for the class of 23 in many of those three areas. And what we are doing right now is we're looking at the students who have not yet met, and we're going to be working with them and their counselors to be able to identify methodologies for them to be able to meet the Keystone Exam requirements.
I was under the impression that the requirements were waived if you were taking a Keystone class during the pandemic, so they didn't have to take the Keystone or make it, make anything else up because...
In some instances, you are correct, but they had to take what they call the Keystone trigger courses. So that would either be algebra, biology, or English 10. Okay?
But I was just thinking a lot of them were ninth graders, so they would have been in biology and in algebra and a lot of missing data. That's all correct.
Judy, it would be very helpful for the rest of us because we have these that we get at home to look at and, and consider. When you have four or five suggestions, I couldn't write them down fast enough, and I'm not getting them off the TV. So if you have a list of suggestions for us to add to this, it would be very helpful if you type them up and send them to Linda or Bob so he can send them to all of us. Whatever. I don't have them, so.
When I go home, I'll email them to Linda.
We've been working on these for about six months now, so having your latest suggestions will be helpful.
No problem.
Well, board members, we are ready to start our review of the most recent update to the board goals for the 22, 23 school year. I do want to acknowledge, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, but I want to thank Dr. Reynolds for guiding the board through with the other cabinet members, the board goal discussion that was on the 22nd of August. I was able to watch by way of Zoom. And I also want to thank the board members, especially because the focus on taking a look at specific metrics, I think, is very important. And as you'll see, particularly in the areas of student achievement, we did add a number of data points for the school district to strive to succeed, to achieve. And also in that column for assessment, we did our best to express the timing as to when data would be updated, as well as when data would be reported out in terms of that final progress. So what I would like to do, I do have, Mr. Wagner, thanks to Judy, we do have a couple of corrections. And under Goal One, under Student Achievement, item number two, we left out the word "more." So a 5% decrease in the percentage of students with two or more level two or three disciplinary actions. And then that term was also left out of the very second sentence there. So at this time, I would like to, for the first area of student achievement, just take any suggestions, feedback, comments from the board members. And then we would like to just progressively try to work through the different goal areas for the board goals. So the first goal area is student achievement, and this comprises that if you do have a hard copy or you're looking on your computer, that would be from pages one through four. So welcome any, any comments, feedback, ideas. Mrs. Chester.
Can we add the whole numbers as well so we know that the percentages are taken from? I know it has to be an approximation because that number could fluctuate, but if, even if we could do an approximate, I think it would make it really clear as the sink. And then when we're measuring against the goal, we can clearly see that, yes, we made that measure of word, and we didn't worry how much either by.
Yes. So that, that's more a reflection, Mrs. Chester, as to how we report that? Or is there something specific that you would like to see included in the language, whether that is in the goal area or the assessment area?
Well, in the goal area.
Okay.
So for the, let's look at the very first one, measurements of priority. How would you rewrite that?
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
A 5% decrease or approximately a, whatever the 5% is, a 5% increase or approximately 250 students with 16, who have 16 or more cumulative absences. Just reference it to the number that it is being referenced against.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
So if we're, if that, take the 5% and reference that to, or enrolled it right now, I think it's 12,170 students, so that, that we would indicate what that 5% number, raw number would be.
I know it's an approximate because I know that number could change.
Okay.
It, in a way, it would change.
All right. So that is something, just other board members, that we could definitely include where we're indicating percentages, that we would include what that raw number would be if, upon meeting that goal.
I think it neatly keeps everything in place. And when we're looking at it six months in now, we won't, we won't have to go digging through stuff saying, what is that number?
Okay. And we will...
Hey, because if we make 4% progress instead of 5, we'll know what that really looks like.
Is it 20 students?
How many students do you have?
Any other comments or feedback for student achievement area?
I do, Bob. It says a 5% decrease in the percentage of all students, 16 or a 7% decrease in the percentage of minority and low-income students with 16 or more community absences. Can we replace the term minority students with African-American and Hispanic?
We can do that. Any other questions there? And that has been, I think, we're being specific because that definition, folks are going to wonder what does that, right?
We have white groups, minority students who are not in that at-risk category, and including them would not be helpful.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for student achievement? Again, I would like to just thank the board again for that very specific and detailed feedback. I do think that this is a very healthy development with our board goals. I'm someone that enjoys specificity, and I think this is very supportive of really identifying exactly what we're striving for. And that term measurements of priority, we'll still be taking a look at all of our local effectiveness measures, but we know that when we reported out on our effectiveness measures back in, in August, that concern for discipline and attendance is very true. And there are a lot of reasons for that, but we know one of the hallmarks for student success is to be able to attend school regularly. And that has an impact on the climate within the building. It supports students in terms of their academic achievement. So that is related to the discipline, discipline piece. And we know that there were various points where last year, where students, even upon opening school, that there was that uncertainty of, well, am I going to be here tomorrow because of contact tracing? And then we know we entered a very, very difficult time, particularly in the month of January. And there were also times when parents kept students out of school because they were preparing for family to come over. Or in some instances, as I shared back in February, there were students who were getting ready to get their booster, and they didn't want to get sick and then lose that opportunity. So a lot of those things are no longer, not the wood, a part of the start of the school year. And we're looking very optimistically, and we've had a very successful start, as I've shared with the board, to the year. So I expect these areas that we will do well, but the impact that they will also have in terms of supporting overall student experience and academics, I think, is very, very important.
I have one small ask from the student achievement. So number five regarding social emotional learning. Thank you so much. I love how smart this goal is. No, really, you guys really took to heart our feedback from the last session, and we really appreciate how it's been articulated here. I know when we had that last working session, we talked about the fact there is not necessarily a direct correlation between SEL programming and academic outcomes. But I am curious if there's an opportunity here for us in the future to compare and even not to make buildings competitive, but to at least look at like how buildings are performing on these measures, and then also look at the academic outcomes in those buildings to see if there is any correlation. Just something for us to be making mindful of in year two and three of this comprehensive plan. So I think this is a great place for us to start, but I hope we can build on it also.
I appreciate that. And that, there are many ways, and I want to thank Melissa, too, for just really fleshing the details out here for measuring SEL. But I just wanted to share a little bit that one of the plans that we have this year will be to train our own staff to do what we call climate walks across different buildings. And that is something, then, because we'll be using our, our own folks that will be able to do more regularly and conduct those climate walks, not only of your own building, but of other buildings. So Stacy, to your point, I think it's also going to set us up in a position where we're going to be able to visibly share best practices for social emotional learning across the school district. So thank you. I would like to now move to the goal area for equity, and this is on page five to six. And this is again, something that we fleshed out in terms of the measurements of priority, so that we had very specific information that was provided. And questions here?
Yeah, I thought I had given you guys this feedback, but maybe I didn't. I think we need to retain, first of all, I think the language should be diverse, excellent candidates. Excellent, diverse candidates. Yeah, I don't think it should be just diverse candidates, but I think just as importantly, we have to be keeping our eye on how we're doing it, retaining those candidates that we do hire and, and growing them. And I don't, I know that there's a little language under assessment to increase the hiring retention of all, you know, staff, the endeavors staff, whatever we define diversity, but it's not actually in the measurements of priority. And I wonder if we can include something in there. I think we should.
Are you just able to provide then in measurements of priority, a specific measurement that you would, you would like us? Or if that's something, Kate, that if you want to email that to me and Dr. Almert, we'll be happy to take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, there's no, there's no actual numbers here with regard to recruiting and hiring diverse candidates either. So it's just, we're just saying, oh, we're going to pay attention to this. But apropos of our earlier conversations, there might be some, you know, I think maybe some goals, some concrete goals in both hiring and retention would make a lot of sense. And I'm happy to email you something I'm not good at.
No, thank you for elaborating. Those are, those are measurements that, that we do, there are measurements that we do monitor, that I think we can quite simply, Jeff, that we can work that into the measurements of priority.
As, as stated, it's not, it's not a goal. As it's stated in the measurements of priority, as they are stated right now, they're not, there is no indication of number or percentage of increase or anything like that.
Right. It's just put out there as a sort of nebulous thing.
Be a nice to do.
Yes. All right. Then that, then Jeff and I, and any input from the board in the interim, then we will look to include more specific data points for the measurements of priority. I agree.
Which on some level reinforces point number five about tracking the data. So we're going to track the data, so let's use the data to help guide us.
And also, the term diverse is such a broad term. I, there, there have to be factors that are included in that term, whatever you're using for, does that...
I think under assessment, there's a sort of definition that's pretty broad.
We do have...
Yeah, okay. Now that's...
Do you want any of the goal statement to?
Um, no, I think that's fine. I just hope it misses.
And that, too, that is data and information. The hiring is still occurring. We're, we're at a pretty good spot, but we still have a few vacant positions. I think teaching-wise, we're 100% filled. We just have...
Besides long-term substitutes.
Besides long-term substitutes, right. It's fine. There are some teachers whom we have hired from other districts that were, were waiting for, for that in terms of their start dates. So that's data that's still ongoing. And it is, I guess, if the LTS positions also occur, that there may be later in the year to that contribute. So that, that is something I think, too, that we can be very active updating the board in those regards. Okay. Thank you. Yes?
For number one, a mid-year personnel report will review current stage hiring towards candidates. Last year, we reported out on that in September, and I believe we're going to report out on it again this, at the end of the month at a board meeting. Do we want to do two report counts then, or just?
Well, that's where it does say number five, the district will provide twice yearly data tracking retention. So I think we could modify that to the district will update at Personnel Committee meetings, the hiring data for that year. And we can indicate that we will do that twice.
Okay. Because five just talks about retention, but one talks about hiring.
Right, right.
So it would be twice a year for both retention and for hiring, right? September would be one time, and then six months later, some, you know. I wrote it into myself. Oh, I wanted to add a bullet to page five. I'd like to add the following. The district will maintain its commitment to developing an administrative team that more closely reflects the diverse composition of our student body and community by conducting a wide-reaching search for candidates as cabinet-level positions become open.
Any other comments that Darrell's input? And Darrell, if you would be able to email me that, Jeff and I will, will work on including that.
Absolutely. And I think that's all I have for that section.
Okay. Any other thoughts then on the equity areas?
So, and number three, with respect to the parent listening sessions.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think this is a great thing. I know what you've done so far has been very successful, and it creates or helps collect some really good, you know, digital information. In terms of it being a goal, like, is there a goal just that they're conducted, or is there something, an outcome that we're looking for in these, like, creating, like, what's the impact to the district as a result of these sessions? I just think it might be good for us to be specific. And, and I realize, like, it's hard to predict what you're hearing in sessions, right? Like, you're not psychic. But maybe we can specify in terms of, like, creating actionable feedback or something to then be incorporated back into our programming, whether it be at the building level, the grade level, whatever is appropriate.
So under, perhaps, so part of this is doing this for the first time, and I've actually scheduled the middle schools to finish, to do all three middle schools during the month of September. And then I want to work out with high school principals how and when the best time is going to be there. But I, I do believe that a lot of this right now, Stacy, is qualitative, because it's the first time that, that we've done anything like this. But I think that, I think that maybe under, under the area of assessment, and I think it's maybe adding something, the superintendent will report at the Education Committee meetings, the outcome of parent listening sessions.
And maybe any action.
With the intent to develop actionable, actionable strategies, actionable steps, something along those lines. Okay.
So if your purpose is to listen to parents and hear, hear their concerns, and it might, I don't know if we have a list, or if you have a list, of the ways in which you get information from parents. There are emails, of course, but you get, you meet with a PTO once a month, the school district PTO?
We do meet, actually, our first meeting is this Thursday.
Okay. So we think that parents are pregnant. I mean, that's one, one resource. You get information, sort of ad hoc information from the school board. We, we call you, we say, ah, 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 ran into three people. The fit, the pitchforks are coming regarding something. But how do you, how do you gather information from people? And I, so there is a purpose and a good thing about a rather informal situation where you're just listening, you're just visiting. There isn't an agenda. There isn't an issue. There's just conversation. That is good stuff. But it's not the same as getting information that you can action necessarily. You can do, so that, that's something I think we want to think about. How do you gather information? How many parent committees do you have? I don't know. How many parent committees we have going? But they're usually based on an issue, transportation or homework or something like that. So how do you get that? And that's worth doing some, so making some notes so that we can say that our superintendent and board gathers information from our community in the following ways. And then that information is used to make changes or think about things, or perhaps form a formal committee because we need one.
I think it's... You're using this, though, as a pilot, correct?
Right. I haven't yet completed, we did all the elementary schools, and I shared out at the August board meeting, a lot of what that, what it was qualitative feedback. And that is something, like, for example, one of the pieces that definitely came out, and Dr. Missin and I are working on the principles, getting parent volunteers and engaging with our...
What did they have?
That, that definitely was an outcome of those conversations.
So, so are you saying how you synthesize that information and direct back into some actionable, or in that, in response to the needs or maybe the...
Maybe the goal is to gather information from parents and the community in a variety of ways.
Yes.
And then there's a list of things. There's the listening sessions, there's the, there's the committee participation, there's this, there's that. I think that's the larger thing. So that you've got, first of all, you're communicating back to the community, that there's robust communication, and I think that's important because sometimes people forget that. But also, it's, it's, you know, it's also saying, like, we think this is great, and we're going to ask you to report back to us about what you've heard from parents and where you think there might be room for action, or where you've already taken action in the, in the case of committees, where sometimes you get very specific action items. So it's really just a way to be, I think, more comprehensive in how you communicate, you know, how we support you and how you communicate that you're doing all of this. Because you are, because the district is collecting a lot of information.
Is the goal more about how he distills community feedback? And then there are bullet points or measurements of priority, if you will, for those that are included, like the listening sessions and PTO meetings and...
Might just be awaited. Might just be awaited.
So you're including all of.
Yeah, there has to be more here than listening sessions.
Right, so that would be part of including listening sessions.
Yeah.
Right, and that would then be.
And there could be too, that when, as I mentioned before, surveying parents and students and staff. And some learning elements, last year, we surveyed twice. But as I shared at our, I think that was back in August, that I think it's going to be advantageous for us to survey a little bit earlier in the year. So in that October, November time period, in that time period when parent conferences start to happen, I thought that was really important feedback from the board. And then also, not to do the end of the year in mid-May. I think that it would probably be smarter to do that at a time when you can still assess the data that's coming back. And I'm wondering if just through the survey questions, if there are questions that we could, we could share that would maybe more, be more expressive in terms of parent engagement, community involvement. So I can consider ways to strengthen that quantitative feedback.
So, would you just, would you be the only one person, or would it be you and the cabinet that is responsible for collecting and distilling this information? Rather than put all this on your show?
Well, that kind of feels a little comment that I, a suggestion I wanted to make.
Yeah.
For listening sessions conducted by the superintendent or their designated. And, because that could be the superintendent, it could be any member of the cabinet.
Sarah and Kalia did accompany me, at least one of them was, was with me at every one of the elementary sessions.
I would think by, by, or designated, that way, if you're putting out tons of fires here,
Yeah.
and you're not able to make one or two of these, it's not like we didn't make our goal.
Right.
So it takes a little bit, I know you love being, you know, visible and that's awesome. But I think that kind of helps you to share some of the burden with others, and it makes it so that you're not the only person responsible for making that goal.
Thank you.
So I hope that's helpful.
That is.
So we're developing a sort of file, or list, or something, that includes the many ways that we ought to be gathering information from our community and responding to them. So this is, this is new, but I look at this listening session as a more informal, kind of friendly way to listen to people than some of the other more formal quantitative ways. We can say, you know, there was vast dissatisfaction about homework, or something. So, having a file that you can say, when somebody says, well, you don't listen, and you don't talk, and blah, 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 you can say, here are all the ways that I do that. And communicate, remembering that this is a team of ten.
Right.
That these are the ways I share that information with the board, so that we know if we have to adjust something, or add something, or.
Right.
Deal with something.
So as an administration, one of the things I'll also share too, with communications, I'm having conversations with Molly Schimler, our communications manager, about perhaps two or three times a year, whether it is at an education or people services committee meeting, to report out on communication. So what are our metrics saying? There are a number of things that we can look at where the data, in terms of, like an example, last year, we started in October, a new district newsletter. And it's, Michael maybe can talk about this, but the metrics that show how frequently the newsletter was opened. And one of the coolest things that I thought I saw was that it, it shows you where, all over, not just in the United States, but all over the world, where the newsletter is being accessed. So that, I think, is something that I think as an administration, that I look forward to reporting out two or three times a year, overall communication. And how, how do we know that we are doing an effective job? How are we recognizing areas of communication where we can do better?
So perhaps, what I'm hearing is that, as far as the document we're looking at for equity, for point three, instead of having just the superintendent listening session, we should have a section on communication, and then we should have measurements of priority, including the listening sessions, surveys, other ways that we communicate with our, our community. And then we can look at all of those in the context of a whole.
I think there are a lot of good things going on, and you've made a really nice effort. But I think we more, we need to be stronger in the communication with all of us, board members, cabinet, community. And I think if we do have a list of items, I think that will help us target it. The other thing I see with this, the diversity, the equity, it's, to me, it's like the work in progress. We're trying to do as much as we can, we're trying to do the best job that we can. But we continue to have to keep doing more. And I like your idea of, Molly, working with the PR. I think that's really important, because I don't think sometimes our community is connecting as largely as it should.
Yeah, so I think too, we're, we're hopefully coming out of times where we had to be reactive. I know I come into the board and cabinet about how many things hit the news cycle, either on a Thursday, or Friday, or over the weekend, without any really warning. And I think that we're at a place now where we can be more proactive with our communication. And just simply in year two, as the superintendent, that's, that's an area that is definitely a point of concentration for me. And not just being proactive with things that are challenging, but also putting forth good news, and not, not waiting for it to appear in another way, but really being intentional. And that also really hits that point of, you know, caring and community and expressing our gratitude, you know, for all of our staff, and really all of our parents as well. And that was, that gratitude piece was absolutely something that came across in all of the listening sessions.
Since we're on this path of communication and awareness and PR, I'd love to even see us do some, either marketing, or something around, wait, wait, I haven't said what I want to market. I mean, I'd love to give people that are understanding of how the board works, right? Because people ask us a lot, like, what are we doing? How are you performing? And we get a lot of feedback, positive and negative. And we're setting our goals for the year, and, no offense, Judy, we love you, with one person in the audience, right? Like, this is the meeting that it should be built to the rafters, with people coming and asking questions, and clarity, and understanding how we're going to operate for the year. Like, this is the moment and the opportunity. People don't realize these are happening, they don't realize how this relates. There's so much focus on the monthly board meeting, and most of what we do doesn't happen there. It's consent agenda, it's hearing from the students, it's executive readouts, it's committee readouts, right? But the work is done in sessions like this and in committee. And I'd love to see more engagement, but people don't understand. So I don't know how we do that, I don't know if it's some of your two-minute videos, or something, to like, just help people understand, like, there are opportunities to engage with us, not being taken advantage of. So, I mean, it's a good board goal for us to raise our profile.
Great segue, Stacy, for the next area, which is board engagement. Any comments there? And one of the things that I am planning to do this year is to provide informal opportunities for board members to visit schools. And I would like to, once a month, whether we're at a building for an hour, or an hour and a half, and maybe, you know, maybe it's, you try to focus on the schools that are in your region. But I'm planning to do that once a month, and we'll either be starting, I think, on the 23rd, or the 30th. I'm trying to check my calendar to make sure I don't have any conflicts. But something very informal, where the principal, a few students can take us around to classrooms, and we can, we can see and we can feel all those great things that are happening in our buildings. And Mrs. Tierney, are you okay if I bring, so, but in terms of that, that is really item number two. The superintendent and cabinet will establish monthly opportunities for board members, so that's something that's new. But I think that would be a very healthy thing. And Daryl, as you said, yes, I do enjoy, you know, being visible in the schools, interacting with students and staff, and fellow administrators. So I would be happy to just bring me along.
And those, those visits are fun, and I've been to a couple of those visits. And it's just great to meet the students, it's great to meet teachers. So, I do enjoy those opportunities, but I work all that.
And that's where I understand not everybody's going to be able to make. So if I can provide multiple opportunities, and maybe at different points of the day, so that board members can be able to participate. Next area is accountability, so this is really the responsibility of the board in terms of governance. And Mrs. Tierney, would you like me to talk about number one? We had a thought here, and in relationship to policies, are you okay if I mention this?
You should, yes.
Alright. Thoughts that board members may have on forming a separate policy committee? And I would look at the composition would be two members from property and finance personnel, as well as two members from education and pupil services. And we would more specifically then focus on policies during the policy committee meetings. And I think there could be some flexibility as far as would it makes, for month to month, would it make sense to have that in conjunction with the second Monday of the week, when we would have pupil services and education? Or would it make sense insofar as having that be a part of, or the end of, a property and finances separate committee?
Pupil services and education, like some of those.
I would say there's a lot of overlap in what, in creating policy and what we talk about on education and pupil services.
Okay, it also means we're all on the same.
Yes.
So, are we.
And that doesn't have to be, it's something that the board can just simply think about.
So are you guys thinking that this is a, this is a new standing committee? Or is it an ad hoc committee, like when Brett was on the board and went through every single damn policy?
But we need, it's a board's job to do that. We have not done it at all, except on a, on a sort of.
I understand, but if you, I'm just asking, do you mean to do this continually into the future? Or do you mean to go through our policies within a certain amount of time, and then take a rest, and then go back in? It's just, I just don't, I'm not clear what you guys are suggesting. Is it the never-ending review, or?
I think, I think it's going to have to be a once-a-month review, because new policies come up every month. PSBA gives us new things, or the attorney says, oh, this isn't working here. So, there is a need for, for some people to come together. I prefer before the board meetings start, rather than after, because I'm about done in after. But that you could, the group can decide that, and we probably need an attorney at those meetings, because, and it can be presented, not so that we're endlessly going through all of the ones that, but we did get rid of an awful lot of the 1930 policies that were in there when we went over them the last time. But almost every month, we have policies, or aging things to update. And that ought to be done on a basis, it can be first read, second read, and then you bring it to the board, to the end-of-the-month meeting for an adoption. And the, at that point, the board, unless it has questions it needs to ask an executive committee before the meeting, the board pretty much understands that a policy committee has reviewed it, the attorneys have reviewed it, and here it is for your approval. So it's not a matter of our sitting and taking a policy apart in a board meeting and rewriting it. Does, does it make sense to everybody?
Yes.
It, you know, we were saying, an ad hoc committee, it almost sounds like another board committee. It's something, it's something that we have not ever picked up, but probably should have.
Would, and just a thought, would it, would it make sense then, in December, even though there aren't any elections right now, but we would still have a rework meeting? Would it make sense at that time to address that, Mrs. Tierney?
It does to me, because it's going to take you or your designated some time to organize how this, what this will look like, what the meeting will look like. And I know at the IU, where they do this every month, we have big notebooks, but we don't take the big notebooks home, they're given to us when we show up at a meeting. But then Mary Curly has developed some pages, here's your first reads. Now, we're going over the revisions on a second read from what we looked at last one, and here are the ones that are moving forward to the board. The board president reads the, the policy numbers, and people sort of vote on them as a whole, unless there's something that appears in an executive committee meeting that people are deeply concerned about for some reason. But usually, by that time, when it's been seen by your board members, and administrator from the IU, and the attorney, they're set, they're good to go. So, if we can develop that kind of system, so that we're ready to go, and we're not just sitting around going, you know, what should we do tonight? So that somebody, I'm afraid it becomes the responsibility of somebody in your, now, Mary Curly is communication, so if Molly hits that one, that would be something she might be able to do. And then, we get the people that we want, and December, we ask them to join the committee and get going.
Now, we, we review and revise policy today, right? We typically start getting committed with it, and then bring it to the board. So, this isn't really new work, we're just changing, we're formalizing the group who's responsible for it, and making it its own entity, if you will, for review and working sessions, essentially, rather than it being incumbent on any existing committees to address it.
And, and the policies that we're reviewing don't necessarily seem to have everything to do with education, or pupil, or personnel. They're just put in that because we say, well, where should we do that? Well, Curly doesn't have much on his schedule, so we'll stick it in P and F. Or, there's not much in, there's not much in education, but there always is. And so, it takes it away from the committees, which really do have other things to do. And we are trying to figure out which we can stick into education or pupil services.
I, I think, I think this is a good idea, I think we should talk a little bit more about how to handle it. And I would also say we should think carefully about who our cabinet would be leading, because I would personally want somebody who has some depth of knowledge about district policy already. But, yeah, I think it's a good idea, and if, and if the goal is to sort of get this up and running when we go, what, in November, that gives us plenty of time. So I, yeah, it's a good idea.
We have a few minutes left, so we'd like to look at the, okay, just eight and nine, the areas of innovation, any feedback there?
Just, just again, the term minority students, there's a fact being addressed in the same way as we discussed earlier.
Yes.
You're asking for that.
Yes.
Yes, that's easy.
Did you say renovation, though?
Yes, pages eight and nine.
So, Daryl, are you saying take out minority and low-income students and substitute African, African, Hispanic?
And.
And low-income.
And low-income.
Yes.
Just back on accountability real quick, the health and safety plan, I had some feedback lost on that, sorry. Sorry, just sort of looped past that one. So you say, there's an update in November, but part of my feedback was very specific about the fact that, you know, in our last update on health and safety, you said we're adopting our contagious disease policy. So, my expectation right now is that change in November is the policy, that the plan is, we're following our health and safe, our contagious disease policy, period, and a short. Is that a reasonable expectation?
I sure hope so. This is a requirement every six months that we at least review, and that's a federal, that's an ESER requirement.
No, I, I understand that.
Yeah, so that, but that, when we shifted our policy back in late May, I'm sorry for that surprise meeting, we did shift it very much so that it points to our communicable disease policy. And in that month of November, perhaps we'll have more of an opportunity. Or, there could be information forthcoming that.
It still says a lot of things, the conclusion of which is we're pointing to contagious disease policy. What I'm asking is that it, it needs to just be succinct and say that. That any major changes or adjustments otherwise would require revision to the plan and agreement of the board.
Well, and November is. Well, and November is the timeline because that's when, that would be six months removed from May. So Stacy, we can, we can have that discussion at that point and we may have a lot more information at that point as well.
Well, I was just going to ask if, if we could move the numeric content of the goal from assessment to goals for the first, for number one, under innovation?
That makes sense.
Yes.
And simply then indicating when would be the time of reporting out on that?
And I, I only think for the 5% increase, I think that's the only number. The minimum 20% of title, I think that can stay because that's the way you're supporting the 5%.
But it's, you are correct, that we should shift that over to the goal.
Correct.
Statement. And then under assessment, indicate when we will, when we'll be reporting out on that.
Right.
That's how we're doing it elsewhere.
And that's how we're doing it elsewhere.
So I think just.
Yeah.
So on number 300 innovation, the last iteration of this goal talked both about reducing external cyber charter enrollment and increasing ours, it said about attracting, right? So is this goal now focused exclusively on reducing the number of students who are outside of the district enrolled in charter schools? And do we need a goal or do we have a goal for our own cyber program?
We do not have a goal for our own cyber program, other than that we would have, as was originally designed, a program at the secondary level. And that, that's something too, that when we get to that point of course selection time, what we want to be able to do is really point our cyber program out to students who are attending cyber charter programs.
Do we need a goal though that says we have this minimal number of participation in that cyber program to justify sustaining it? I mean, do we have a benchmark there? Because I know.
That is difficult because it was never the intention that we would have had last school year or the school year before as many students in our cyber program. And this year, as we shared with the board, elementary students, we're not running our program, we have those students who are involved in the BBA program. And where I see the program ultimately having its most success is really at that high school level because it provides the flexibility for scheduling for students.
So I think that's my, that's the question for me is, I understand why we eliminated the elementary, I think that was a good call.
Yeah.
Do we have those same considerations for the secondary program? Like, is there a certain amount of participation that is needed to justify the expense or is it a relatively cost neutral proposition for us that'll have flexibility? And we don't really have a metric associated with needing it by, for both students and staff. I think so.
Yeah. But I don't think we're running a cyber school as much as meeting students' needs. Some students have needs for getting classes in, via a computer and not being in school. But it doesn't mean that we have a cyber school, that, maybe we need an update on that, Bob. So let's, let's, let's get an update on where we are with cyber school, how many kids we have in it? And is it something, how many teachers? Or do we have teachers teaching in-class academics and a couple periods of cyber? Which means we don't have a cyber school in the sense that the PALCS has one out on. Right, it's an option which helps us meet student needs and that's the way I thought it was.
Then I will look, and Kalia can work on that with John, then, as to how we could express that and maybe it's the addition of another goal area?
I think it's appropriate separately.
Yes, I think so too. Okay.
Right.
Six twenty-three.
But I'll, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
That this is a very well-written goal here under charter school, we should move over one column. And you can use the measure of when.
Yes, exactly. That's the very same suggestion you made earlier. If it's all right with everyone, if we are to page 10, fiscal responsibility, if we could just take a couple of minutes for feedback there. And then what I will do with my team is we will revise based upon the comments and feedback to include in the board packet hopefully by the end of this week. Mr. Scully would like to make a comment and he shared with me earlier that the assessment part for number two, he is going to modify that so it's more specific. You want to share, John?
I want to be honest, I did cut and copy from above and I didn't mean to. So for the, for the assessment, I think the assessment should be that the, the budget for the 23, 24 school year will include funding for the areas identified in the comprehensive plan. So I typed that somewhere, but it didn't show up on your goals, my apology for that. But I would like to.
That will, that will show the revised, revised, revised version.
Get back to you.
All right, so the plan then is cabinet, we will update once again. And we will, if needed, we, we may potentially have one more goal meeting, but if not, we may be able to simply bring this under other business at the September 27th board meeting. Any additional comments or questions? And we just did want to take just a couple minute break before we begin our education combined pupil services committee meeting. Mrs. Tierney, are you good to adjourn?
This meeting is now adjourned.